And it's all lowercase.
You were outside, see?
Way down this way.
She came right out.
Legions to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a question with the minutes. I move to approve for either 12 minutes. I move to approve the minutes from November 12 and the special meeting November 21st. Any questions?
Uh, I did not. Did you, Mark? I make a motion to accept the payables from November 2024.
A second.
So are we ready to do the procedure for agenda? Are we ready? I mean...
Yes, sure. Yep, yep.
Let me sign this real quick. In order to accommodate public comments and requests to be on the agenda, our attorney has drafted a form that people can fill out to request being able to have something added to the agenda, which we have a copy of the form. I guess we should probably put it over there so they can see it. Our attorney added that he checked with city attorneys across the state of Idaho, and none of them report that people other than council members, mayors, and staff may add anything to the agenda in order to keep council in control of the agenda. He has proposed that we handle this in the following manner. If someone other than mayor, councilor, or staff wants to have something added to the agenda, they will fill out the agenda request form and submit it to the clerk. Upon receipt, therefore, the clerk can email form to the city attorney and council members. If the council member is ready to have the items added to the agenda, they can respond to the city attorney, and he will do a legal review. Unless the city attorney determines that the topic is something that should not be on the agenda, he will then have the clerk... It says "added to the agenda," but I don't think that's right. Is it? It's not?
It should not be added to the...
It should not be added to the agenda and notify the requester that it is not on the agenda. This procedure keeps control of council meetings. Members of council have the legal and political authority and responsibility to control the agenda. The agenda request form can be found on our website or picked up at City Hall. Per our attorney, we've also added to the agenda a public comment section. This will be at the end of the council meeting, before adjournment. Each audience member will be recognized by the council and have the opportunity to address the council without interruption. The recognized audience member will have three minutes to speak, and Justin will be running the timer. Okay? So I think now we're on the ARPA funds. And we kind of talked about this already, didn't we? So, and did you...
I...I'm not sure.
Well, I think we moved to use it for... We were gonna use to move it to a...
For the gravel?
Well, for salaries, and then we could use that money for the gravel with the alleys and the trailer.
So salaries, is that what it was?
So, to be specific, we have to be very specific in our meeting, so we'll have to appropriate to whose salary it was and how much. I do need to point out to you guys that Pope Asphalt was paid in September for Alec Street paved. So that will... The only remaining amount of money left in the ARPA funds that will be applied towards salaries is $47,880.32. You guys did say in the last city council meeting about $10,000 was gonna go towards the signs and then also the trailer. But I know that there was no clear amount that you guys had on that Pope Asphalt for Alec Street paved. So, the motion or the request is to have for the minutes to reflect for Justin's Pope salary, Bonnie Wismar, and Wendy Sandino to have $47,880.32 be applied for ARPA funds. And then, I think it should say then it will reopen... You know, we'll reopen the budget again so that we can apply that money back to the things that you guys actually wanted to go towards.
But so instead, we would change that to... Would we still use those names? Or would we input yours and Melva's?
No, because this is gonna be for the FY25, because the audit hasn't been done yet. And so it'll meet the federal guidelines to have it done and appropriated before the deadline date. So the auditor had recommended that it be in the FY25 physical year, not the FY25 year. That's also the reason why we'll have to reopen to have it applied to this year's committee.
So we still use Bonnie and Wendy's name, don't we?
Yes, please. That's what was recommended.
I move to allocate the remaining ARPA funds to Justin Coates, Bonnie Wismar, and Wendy Sandino's salaries.
I'll second.
New computers for the clerk and maintenance supervisor.
Um, have you taken this or am I taking this? Okay, so... Justin and my computer are...is old, so it's not as compatible with Windows. Yeah, you do it, because you know about it.
They're not Windows 11. So our firewall system, our security system, cannot be updated to make them in compliance with our requirements for security. They are also...I mean, Justin's computer kind of was just a store-bought. Yeah, and we've had a lot of trouble trying to get it downloaded and put some kind of antivirus on it, and none of them are Windows 11 compatibility. So BNI, who manages all of our security, has recommended that both Melva and Justin get their computers. Mine was updated, I believe, last year.
So we just bought computers or...
We bought laptops for just COVID. Yeah, so we used some of the ARPA funds. That's what we got, the iPads they got.
I was thinking we just...yeah, we just did it.
Laptops like we're going.
And we just had BNI create a quote, so that can be...
So is this a quote for one or two?
It's like a two, two separate ones. One for each person. And then one of them has different...
Mine, the 1627 one, is for the clerk. It's got more stuff on it, because it's so slow. I can't even get looked on to. Stuff that I need to get into to do utility management.
So do you...do we still have the laptops or the bots for COVID?
Yes.
And are they compatible or not compatible?
They are.
They are?
I just had them...sorry. I just had my laptop was just worked on the other day. They've added all the VPN and everything set up on it so it can be used.
So I'm wondering if, like, for maybe Melva this time, we could just get a docking station? Then, so you can dock to your two monitors? And then, so we're not buying them both at one time? Like, separate amount? Anybody have any thoughts? Or just throwing things out there?
What's the issue with yours?
Getting some price books would be good.
Getting some price books from other places?
Yes.
I thought they were...
Jay was in there transferring all my TDS emails. It took him a solid day, one whole day, to do it. Because my computer is old and they were having trouble. They were doing a remote read. I don't know. It works okay for me, but he said it's way outdated and for the security, so I just, you know...
It didn't have any antivirus on it.
So, back to what Nick was asking though. Can we use the laptops with the docking station? Or do you need laptops for a different utility?
I could probably use a laptop. Melva has two screens that she uses on her computer, so...
Right.
Well, I think I'll take hers and do Justin's later.
Well, what I'm thinking is we can use Melva's laptop and just put a docking station to her two monitors, update Justin's this time. And maybe Justin wants a laptop. I don't know. And then update again later or something. But Cindy did say that she felt these prices were high. And maybe we should...
I do too.
And Melva said maybe we should shop around before we...
Yeah, if we don't have any others, that would be a good idea.
Yeah. So I move to table the new computers until we get some more price books so we make sure we're getting the best deal.
Before we second, ask a quick question. So why don't we just use the laptops? I'm so like, you have computers and you have laptops. Are you using laptops for anything?
Bonnie took the laptop home and hers from Humble Rock.
Okay.
And I don't know what the other lap... If Wendy had the other laptop, I'd never use the laptop.
Yeah, that was for the clerk.
Yeah, I would check into the price of the...
Only thing is memory on a laptop. The only thing you have to be concerned about is memory. We'd have to probably buy like an additional hardware. Again, I don't know about the security on it.
Okay, so can we check that out? And then just get a price of docking station as well? Is it...would you benefit more from a laptop or from a regular desktop?
Well, I could use a laptop back here, that's fine. But I can't take it to the wastewater plant or the water plant, because neither location has internet.
So basically, you're only using it here?
Yeah, I only use it here in the office. So, and the printer's here, so I do have to print a lot of things. There'll be print reports and a lot of reports, and I mean, all kinds of stuff. So... But I think it only costs initially $500. It was just an HP that Josh and I went and bought and brought back. It's worth fine, but it just like when Jay got into it, he just...I guess I took him all day to transfer my email. So he was like, "Ah, this is an old, old computer."
I knew we're tabling, but if we are gonna be buying more things for the laptops, I would be more interested probably in getting a quote for computers. Because they're at least a couple of years old now, right?
Yeah, I don't know when Josh and I bought it. It was right after we reeled the files on it from 2017.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, are you talking about the laptops?
Yeah, the laptops.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we got those around COVID time, when we got the iPads. So that they could work from home, which I think would have been...
Four years ago.
Yeah, four years ago. So they're probably...yeah. They might work in a pinch for working from home, but... Yeah, definitely just get some more prices. So did anybody second that?
Which one? Which one? Mark asked us.
So I asked for the library funds to be put on the agenda. Cindy, if you want to talk about that?
So currently, right now, these accounts were set up. Laitop Credit Union currently in their checking account has $480.50. They have $25.79 in the savings. And then the LGIP account has $22,668.45. This is all library. This was money that was raised specifically for the library. So I know you said you wanted the amounts.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think $14,000 of it was donated when we sold the property to Coulter Street. And then a bunch of it was raised by the Community Library Project. And with them potentially going to Kendrick, I don't know if we want to... I mean, that money was raised for them. If we want to see if there's something they want to do to the building until they're gone, or if we want to just give them the check and let them put it towards their building in Kendrick?
Well, it was raised for them. I was giving it to them however they want to allocate it.
I don't know. I mean, I want to give to the library. I don't want to feel like Kendrick can't take our library. But yeah.
I'll tell it was raised for it.
I understand. That's true.
Yeah, maybe we'll look at it.
For sure. Maybe we can fight for it. They do have a nice building on the town. It is perfect.
I move to give the library funds to the library.
One second.
I think you're up on the Christmas lights there, Justin.
Oh, so the Christmas light contest is going strong. There are more lights going up every day. We had more people donate. The mayor donated, Wendy donated, Wendy donated, I donated, JCI donated. So that...but we thought as employees, Cindy and I, that if the city was to give $100, that you guys would need to approve it in a city council meeting. So, because it's a gift of like cash to the community. So we thought to be on the safe side, it would be better if you guys would approve that instead of, you know... If you want to do that. And then...
Yeah.
Then we'll be...
I'm not a big fan, honestly. I like the private donations and I like the idea of it. I'm not a fan of spending people's money on it, though. I'm only one vote.
I'm okay with it. I'll make a motion to approve $100 from the city.
I'll second.
I did.
There's not a tie. It's two against one.
Okay, I got you.
Did you not eat your breakfast?
I thought it was three, and yeah. I want to see where he's taken.
So what do we find out about the...
Thank you, and...
So how much do we have total?
We have 800.
Wow.
And how many do you have, less participants? Do you have to blow part in it?
Well, no one has to enter. It's just going to be the judges driving around on the 21st. I'm letting everybody know that their lights need to be on and ready on Saturday, the 21st, at dusk. The judges can drive around. We'll go all through the city limits, and they can judge on whatever criteria they think is...
Okay, so anybody, there's no setup saying, "Hey, I want to do this"?
If someone wins and says we didn't want to be in the contest, then the money, then the judges can pick somebody else. And I'm not in...I put up wets when I'm not in the contest. Because, yeah, so... Yeah, it's cool.
So what do we find out about the web host?
Okay, so I called BNI because you guys wanted to know about Microsoft and Apple being hosted, hosting, hosting our website. And the way that Jay explained it to me is Microsoft and Apple, it is not their... What am I supposed to say here? It's not their specialty for web hosting, and they do it in the cloud. So it's...it could be... The way he explained it is if we switch over to Apple Soft or Microsoft, or Apple or Microsoft, and our servers aren't compatible with what they need, we could lose our emails. He said it's happened to them when they tried to do this before with one of their clients. They lost their emails for a month and couldn't get them back. It could really screw up things. So this is...he recommends going with GoDaddy because he's...they're already set up with GoDaddy. They have clients with GoDaddy. They run our server, so it'd be easy just to hook in there. Our web designer is familiar with GoDaddy because she recommended GoDaddy. And he said it would just be a way less stressful transition to go with GoDaddy. And it's also the cheapest. GoDaddy is the cheapest price that we've had.
Welcome. Would you like to sit here?
I also called Troy and Deary and Bo Bill and asked what they had. Troy said she didn't know. Her IT handles the website. Deary has GoDaddy, and Bo Bill has Wix.
So do we know what the, like, the security is on GoDaddy? Like, do they have the little...
Yes.
Lock thing to make sure that we're secure?
Yeah, so let's see here.
And who...did we...do we have a webmaster, I guess?
Yeah. It's...what's her name? No, that's our... Cam at SurfStop is our web designer. We also have Civic Plus, which they take care of our city ordinances and that kind of stuff, and the security of that stuff on the website. So they're already in place. GoDaddy has all the protections, and BNI would make sure that when they hook us up to them, that it's all there.
And then we also...didn't we talk about...
Teresa?
Yeah, doctor.
Cover on the you?
Yeah.
Well, things that I've been thinking about, like if we're ever going to have them pay the bill... Because they...can they pay the bill online now?
Yes, yeah.
So we want to make sure that we have all of that taken care of.
Yes.
And then if we're ever gonna do, like, say that we decide to do live city council meetings, we want to make sure that the website can handle that. Like, if in the future we decide to do it live or something. And then that has...that does all our emails and everything?
Not our website host doesn't...it's hooked to the... Okay, so the way that...I'm not a IT person, so bear with me. The...the server has all the stuff on it, that, like, our emails and all that kind of stuff. So that's what he was saying about the emails. If you try to switch over to another, something that they don't have, that they gotta hook into, it could mess up the settings that we already have. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So something else that I would just like to know about is... I think it's called virtual visitors. Like, if so many virtual visitors hit, then it kind of takes our website off.
Yeah, could you mention that last time? Like, 5,000 or something?
So Teresa said, and hers... What was it? 5,000 monthly visits, which we'll never make that, so... So I'm assuming that that's the same with GoDaddy.
Well, I would definitely like to know, sure. Because, I mean, I want to make sure that our, like, it's not like 10 for some reason, you know?
Oh, no.
Yeah, if you can get to our website.
No, it wouldn't be that.
And it's still not working currently, right?
No, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to make a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm okay with taking their advice.
GoDaddy's the standard.
So do they off...do we know if they offer, like, different packages? Or is it just one?
This is all I have from Kim. So this is what she got for us. She's our...three years of hosting plus one year of SSL would be $255.63. There will also be a nominal charge for transferring the domain name to them, $12 to $15.
So just one quick question. You said one year of SSL?
Three years of hosting plus one year of SSL would be $255.63.
So how much do you have SSL all the time as well? Because that's our success to secure, like, if they're gonna pay their bill, kind of thing. It's not something we...I mean, that's just something we would want to ask, you know?
Sure.
During the first year, just things we need to think about.
I motion to go with GoDaddy.
I'll second.
You did a good job, Melva, actually.
Thank you.
On my way down to Cheryl?
So after the gunfire, I came here this summer to... I gave you a presentation on a proposal, on an emergency preparedness program. And I got a committee together, and each committee member... And these are professionals in the area. And Liff and Julia, they don't come for these meetings, but they're very active in the community and in Kendrick. And they picked out the areas that they wanted to work in. And then they became very disenchanted. And they started messaging me and telling me that what they were seeing on social media and what they were sitting, seeing on video here from the council on censorship. And they're all diehard First Amendment people. And they said they're not...they're not willing to do anything for the city council or the city of Julia situation, so... And I can't do this by myself. And so their other question was, why doesn't the city council get the lead on an emergency preparedness program for their own city? I didn't have an answer for that. Do you have an answer for it?
No. I think that we would have to talk and create a kind of an infrastructure, because I know you put a lot of time in it and rounded people up and stuff.
I did.
And I do know that it's a very...censorship has been a divisive subject, very much so. So, you know, we're gonna probably... We might run into the same challenges, but I don't see why the city couldn't look into that. Could we turn to you for advice if we needed to? Could we turn to you for advice if we needed to?
Uh, yeah, I have all the, I have all the documentation that I've been working on for months. So, it just needs some leadership, and that's what it, it needs, and you know, I'm a proponent of the First Amendment too, I'm a big stickler for that. And, you know, if, if it happened to any, any one of you, I would stood up for the First Amendment, for you as well. So, I'm just saying, that was, that was, they just, they bailed on me. So I'm just going to let you know that.
Thank you.
Disaster recovery again. There you go.
Yes, sir. Good evening, uh, my name is Corey Williams, Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery. I have my fellow, uh, PNAO attorney in the back over there, um, but we're here in response to the wind fire. You know, what happened was, initially the state of Idaho requested what was called a presidential declaration through FEMA. So, when that request was declined, um, FEMA did reach out to the state of Idaho and requested if they wanted to appeal that decision, because there's also a thirty-day right to appeal. Idaho chose not to appeal the decision, and so as a result of that, it opened up the opportunity for the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery Resilience to come in and help those that were impacted by the wind fire. And a lot of people always speak with SBA, um, we only help out businesses, but in times of disaster, the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience helps out not only businesses of all sizes, but homeowners, renters, and nonprofits. So businesses can go up to two million dollars to repair, replace disaster damaged real estate, machinery, inventory, and equipment. But the most important thing that I would emphasize for any business owner during the time of the wind fire is the need for working capital. And that is the purpose of our Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, which provides working capital funds to pay all expenses, mortgage, lease, employees, accounts payable, whatever was necessary to keep up the business during those operations. Now, for businesses, the interest rates are as low as four percent, it's a twelve-month deferment, and it's a twelve-month zero interest for our first year. So, for any business owner here in Julietta that may need some funds and be able to use those funds for the course of the year, then if they pay those funds back within the year, there's no loan essentially. Now, nonprofits are treated similar to businesses, where they can also borrow up to two million dollars to repair, replace disaster damaged real estate, machinery, inventory, equipment, and also economic injury. When we think about any events that may have been canceled, postponed, that is revenue that may have been anticipated, so that can cause an economic injury to the nonprofit. And that interest rate is fixed at three point two five percent. Um, again, twelve-month zero interest, twelve-month deferment. And then for homeowners, homeowners can borrow up to five hundred thousand dollars to repair, replace disaster damaged real estate, and up to one hundred thousand dollars to repair, replace disaster damaged personal property, which may have been, you know, damaged as a result of wind fire. And those interest rates are as low as two point six eight eight percent, again, twelve-month deferment, twelve-month zero interest. And then the renters can borrow up to a hundred thousand dollars to repair, replace disaster damaged personal property, which would include your vehicles lost as well. So, one of the proposals that I had, in addition to having some amazing pie on Thursday, I had to put the, put a shout out on Thursday, um. You know, we, um, presented an option of what we call, um, a pop-up center. So where we bring the services here to Julietta, um, and we propose, I think there's a small biz event on Saturday. So we, we offered to, uh, potentially come to Julietta to meet people where they are, because one of the things in talking to Cindy and Melba is that it may be hard for those that are in Julietta to make that drive to Lewiston, so, you know, as a part of doing the effective outreach, we have offered to potentially have a pop-up center this Saturday in Julietta, if that's something that the council will be open to. But with that, I want to answer any questions you may have.
I didn't know you had this program, that's amazing, what, what would you need from the city in terms of?
Well, I've already made a consultation with Melba and Cindy in regard to the spacing, so we really use the annex here, and just use tables and chairs. Um, our customer service rooms, and we have two of them, will provide the laptops, and they already have what's called the MiFi, kind of that little portable internet. So, there's nothing essentially other than the space here at the city hall. But, again, one of the things, I just came from Louisiana, I've been doing a disaster since like eighteen years, it was my first job at law school, so. I, one of the things in, a part of us doing effective outreach engagement is sometimes you have to meet people where they are, you know? Don't just put a center in just this place and say, hey, just go, like, we can't have that expectation. So we had a couple of pop-up centers turn hurricane frame scene, and the, the locals really enjoyed it, because it really felt like it was something customized.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, but, uh, so it's not an action item, so.
No, you don't need to vote for them, right?
Yeah.
That's my blessing, that's a great program.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the SBA programs? Thank you, Bill, for that.
I just want to say thank you for the lights, I don't know if you had a microphone set up, it was from Citizens, it was Citizens' idea, it wasn't just, yeah, our idea. Um, Joe and I, uh, finished repairing a covert on Main Street, um, we think a piece of heavy equipment was unloaded on to the street, off the side of the highway, and it collapsed the plastic covert. And it started out as like a four-foot section that was perforated, and then once we dug it up, the whole piece was collapsed, so we replaced the whole thing. And so that's finished, and, um, I think that's about all that I really have to talk about, uh, the lights up in the park and, yeah.
Um, thank you for the lights, appreciate that, and, um, anything else?
Uh, I wanted to thank the, the mayor, the JCI, Mark, for going down, and Justin and Joe for taking care of the lights this year. It's really good down there, so thank you, guys.
Nice.
Want to say the same thank you, and I also want to give out, shout out to Frank Roseclose for the Snoopy, that's my favorite part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Do we do the, the Charlie Brown with the piano too?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Sure, and Lucy and Charlie Brown.
Did he do the snowballs too, the snowmen?
Yeah, he did the snowmen.
They all look really good.
He does stars too, doesn't he?
Yeah, the stars out here on the city.
Oh, and to the mayor, the star is very popular.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks nice.
I'm glad you did it.
Mm-hmm, looks great.
Nothing to report?
I have nothing, I just, since I took up the, the last couple of times.
What about Joe's stuff, though?
Oh, Joe?
Do you have anything, Joe?
Uh, just one thing on the computers, um, when Melba, Melba's computer cannot be backed up, that's one of the reasons they wanted to get her a new computer. So just for the next time you guys left, one of the reasons that.
It's, sure, she can use it, she just can't back it up in her security.
And that was the reason, one of the reasons that he said suggested he had a new one, because that one's old enough, you can't, it wouldn't be, you can do good.
The laptop doesn't back up too?
No, I don't know what's a laptop, he said about her computer, that's one of them that couldn't be done, so.
Okay.
But that's all I had.
Well, thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
I missed this conversation.
Santa Claus comes to town on the twenty-first, at one at the community center.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, I guess we'll open it for public comment. Everybody have any comments?
I have a question. Why is it that the attorney needs to approve what's on the agenda, number one? Number two, there are several lights out on the, uh, baseball park where it says happy holidays, there's several lights that are out there, so those need to be replaced.
The D, A, and I think part of Y.
The A and the D.
Yeah, the D and the A and part of Y.
Yeah.
On holidays. Oh, you did fix it, eh?
Well, it's simple, uh, there are certain things that, uh, have got to be addressed in executive session. Somebody wants to bring up, uh, a discussion with the council that is something that should not be in the, uh, open session, but executive session, I need to be able to warn you.
Any other comments?
Is that the only one you would not approve?
The only one that comes to mind. I mean, I, it, there, there would be some other things if, if it is going to cause legal liability for the city, uh, it. And then the council's got to be able to prove whether they let it come onto the agenda at all. Uh, this is a, a working meeting for council to be able to do their work. Uh, it's not a town hall, it's, but this is time for you guys to be able to get the reports from the council, from the staff, and be able to do the work of the city, and so you guys have to be able to approve what's on this, this is your, your meeting, we're just guests.
So in other words, anything you don't like, or that you think they look like you couldn't, discontinue, you're not going to allow them?
I didn't say that at all, there, there's a lot of things that come in that I don't like.
It took five minutes to say something, I'm assuming that's what you're saying.
No, what I'm saying is, if you ask what I, what I would say no to, things that should not be on the agenda. If it should be in executive session, if it should be, uh, something that brings in city liability, those are things I'm going to step in on. I can't give you an exhaustive list, because I don't know everything that could be brought before me. The general rules owners, I'm going to protect the city from things that are going to cause them liability.
Okay, let me, let me answer this question then. So, regarding that, number one, you're supposed to request your agenda by, I think it's the Tuesday before the next meeting. How long does it take for them to get it to you, for you to approve it, to let the person know whether it's been approved or denied?
You're asking me that?
Yeah.
Uh, they email me when they get it, and I, and I'll get an answer back to them as quickly as possible. Usually within a few hours.
I move to go into executive session, Idaho Code seven-four dash two oh six, subsection one A and B.
One second.